Mike Cott, this is the Hareman City Council, March the 7th, 2023. To order, before we get started, we'll have a prayer by our city manager, Mr. Scott Mason. I'll have my pleasure to lead the flag. Mr. Mason.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day, for the blessings you've given us. And we ask that you be with us and guide us as we discuss the business of the city, and be with us in everything that we do. In your name we pray. Amen. Our pleasure to lead to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the row please.
Brian Frost.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Alicia Harris.
Here.
John Bracken.
Here.
Travis Kirkland.
Here.
Candy Mead.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes for the February 21st, 2023, lead.
I'm making the motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second. Second, Travis Kirkland. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Councilman Kirkland.
Second.
The floor is open for discussion. Call the row please.
Brian Frost.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Bracken.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Candy Mead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to pay the salaries.
It's motion.
Motion by Councilman Frost.
Second.
Second. Councilman Kirkland.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Kirkland.
Yes, sir.
The floor is open for discussion. Call the row please.
Brian Frost.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Bracken.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Candy Mead.
Yes.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Harris.
Second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Mead. Councilman Harris.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Mead.
Yes, sir.
The floor is open for discussion. Call the row please.
Brian Frost.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Bracken.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Candy Mead.
Motion carries. This time, we're here from the delegation. If you'd like to address this council, please come up to the podium, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Bruce Knoblauch, president of the Kornstock Heights Historical Community Organization, and I wanted to invite you all to our annual meeting this Sunday, 4:00, upstairs at Gates Hall. This is an annual meeting in which we talk about what we've done over the last year, conduct the business of electing our board members for this coming year, as well as also setting forward the goals for this coming year. Now, Kornstock Heights is open for everyone. We do not, it's not a homeowners association, which is limited by just people within the historic districts. Anyone that has an interest in Hareman's history is a part of our organization. So we really invite you to become, you know, come to the meeting, become active with it, and, you know, hopefully we'll see you on Sunday, 4:00. We also have this time a potluck, community dinner, following the meeting. So plan on, and bring your families, plan on staying for the dinner, and they have some chance to meet some of the people in our community, including a lot of new residents. We've had a lot of people moving in this last year.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Justin Snow. I'm the interim president at the Rome Alliance. Just want to give an update on a couple of items this evening. We met last Thursday. Felicia Van Aston is our chamber manager, and myself, we met with Kida and Scott and Martha. Where's Martha tonight? Is she at the Rome State? I think she's, she's quite good there, by the way. She's good. But we talked, we met to look at events and potential partnerships and sponsorships, and, of course, Martha pulls out this whole list of events she's got planned for the year. And we want to jump out and help with some of these. So she was telling us about, and I'll pass this flyer around, y'all, I'm sure y'all are well aware of this, but Rockin' on Rome is coming back. So it's in Mayor's Alley's. We have live bands and food trucks coming, the retail stay open late. It's a big gathering, and the Rome Alliance is going to jump in, sponsor this event for April, May, and June. We're going to pay for the bands to come in, we're going to sponsor the entire event. Okay?
Sit up. You already got your bands that's coming in, or is it the battle of the bands, or?
Well, Martha's going to reach out and get the bands, get commitments, but we've agreed to sponsor the next three of them. Okay?
Motion.
Just want to mention that the Rome County Schools Combined Career Day will be at Hareman High School on March the 30th, from 8:30 to 3:00. 500 high school and 528 middle school students will go through the career program. That's over 1,000 students. It's a great opportunity to pique the students' interest in various job and career fields, and they learn what requirements they need to have in order to do that. So, Hareman High School, Alan Lutz does a great job with our team putting on that event every year, so that'll be on March the 30th. And then, I think, actually, Rome State's playing tonight in the championship game for the Juco. This is a wonderful event. I mean, it's something that comes to Rome County about once every 12 years. We met with, our team met with David Lane a couple of weeks ago, and he was wanting to, hey, we've got 20 teams coming in, lots of coaches, fans, players. What can we do to help support our businesses? So that's what our team has done. We've gone around, give us your coupons, flyers, change your signage, digital billboards. Our team set up at the gym for three days. We'd QR codes saying, hey, here's where you should go eat, here's where you should go shop. So, that's things we're looking to do. So, anybody in Hareman that's looking for us to partner with, or to promote, or help, we certainly will help as much as we can. Okay? That concludes my report, and I'll answer any questions at this time.
I just want to say thank you for doing the sponsorship.
Absolutely. And we look forward to doing more.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Justin.
I've been talking with Scott about starting a, well, I bounced the idea off of him, about starting a business association in Hareman, not the downtown district that can be included, but in all of Hareman. I think that there's a lot of businesses that could benefit from us having multiple events together, and we help sponsor each other, and it's still in its infancy, so I'm working on it. Now, my daughter in Connecticut, she's on the Board of Directors for Killingley Business Association. So I'm going to be going up there in the next few weeks, and I'm meeting with their past president, who was president for four years, and he's going to give me a lot of information about how to start something like this up, and what's needed. So I just wanted to let you all know, and get some input from you guys, like, what do you think? Do you think we need something like that?
I don't think we could write it up. Scott's is something that I thought was a great idea.
I can see that being beneficial. I would ask that you go and talk to each business personally, and see, maybe bounce ideas off them, see what they think, you know?
Exactly. And that's, that's what I'll be looking for, people that want to serve on the board, to help start this thing up, and also be directors on the board, so that we can, you know, I mean, I'll just start it, basically, and see where it goes.
Sounds like a good idea.
You know, and it's just something that I think is needed, because I know they have the downtown district. There's very few people, I think, that belong to that, but I think Hareman has a lot of businesses, and I think that if we start bringing them all together and have like a, maybe a website, or some sort of way for people to say, oh, where can I buy a mattress in Hareman? Well, gee, Patterson's is open, is, you know, when they're open, is open, and, you know, or different things. I didn't know there was 20 restaurants in Hareman. You know, so it's something that we can all work on as a community of businesses, to just let everybody know what's going on around here. So, just wanted to get some feedback from you guys, see what you thought.
Sounds great.
Thanks, Austin, Don.
Thank you.
That's a great idea. I had called Scott the other day. Heath Lewis from HUB had brought up an idea to me about our business people, do they know how to set websites up? Do they know how to sell their business online, do things like that? And, you know, we talked about, he thought it'd be good if the city could put on some classes and do some stuff and teach people what, how to run a business. A lot of people are opening up businesses that may come and go, because they don't know how to run a business. So Scott was going to get with Martha and stuff, so I think all of that goes together with us working together. So I think we've got some great things coming. I know the Alliance does some classes in doing that, so anything we can do, and I like to say, thank you all, Bruce, and you, and everybody that comes out in the community to make Hareman what it is. It's because of the support from the outside that makes us who we are, and we appreciate that.
That's right.
Because we love Hareman.
And we can tell, we appreciate that.
So I just want to, I'll let you know in, you know, a few months down the road, once I have a little bit more things to report. So it's still in its infancy.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, we'll go into reports. Hareman's tip order.
All right. Well, Hareman Utility Board continues to stay busy with the AMI project implementation. As a reminder to all of our customers, we are changing out all electric and water meters. We're also changing out many of our gas meters entirely, while others are being retrofitted to AMI. So basically, that means that we're going to continue to be on properties, you know, week after week, for months, until this whole project is done. So if someone has an electric meter, and a gas meter, and a water meter, that's probably three different trips. Just want to get people aware that they'll see us a little bit more than they normally have in the coming months. Also, this, this month, should be about the end of the month, we'll have our annual report out for the year 2022. We're very excited about this, this will be our fifth edition, and I think this one's really interesting, because we're going to give a little bit of, we got a little article in there about what to expect in the electric vehicle world in the future, and we've got a few articles in there explaining how we're going to spend about $5 million in mostly grant funding in the next few years. So I think people need to know where our money is being spent, and what we're doing to solicit, you know, grant money. So I think that's a really interesting story. So please check those out. I'll bring, hopefully, if you don't get a mailed copy, I'll bring it to you next month. We're still working on a location for a public electric vehicle charging station. Right now, we expect that'll either be located downtown Hareman, or at the Midtown exit. So hopefully, we'll have some news on that very soon for you.
Awesome. Anybody have anything for Ms. Kansas?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm pleased to report, as always, at the first meeting of the month, our sales tax numbers. We had a, we had actually a record for the city of Hareman for the most sales tax ever collected in one month. And so our previous record had been around 307,000. We were just over 309,000. And that's not the biggest month of the entire year. The biggest month of the entire year comes about two months before the end of the fiscal year, so we're looking about April, May timeframe. So we'll, we have another big month coming. What that means, of course, is about a 10% annualized increase for this fiscal year over last for sales tax receipts. I also looked at occupancy tax, and what we budgeted, we're at 97% of what we budgeted for occupancy. So anything that we get, basically, for March, April, May, and June, for the next four months, will be an amount above and beyond what we budgeted. So in most of our revenue line items, we're looking at coming out significantly higher than the prior year. I also, just out of curiosity, looked at a couple of other metrics that are important for decision-making and for strategy, and that is, number one, where are our expenditures for the year? I've reported before that we are coming in on a, by department basis, we're coming in at or below in virtually every department, the budgeted amount, which is great. And I attribute that a lot to Scott's monthly review with the, with department heads. But also, I looked across the board, if you look at total expenditures on the balance sheet for, for, across all departments, across some of the more obscure expenditures that we have, that are associated with administration, et cetera, we're also significantly under in those as well. So lots of good news as far as the fiscal health of the city. Lastly, I'd like to let you guys know that I was looking at, in preparation for the budget, I was looking at what our debt service is going forward, and by the end of 2024, we're going to have about, we're going to have three loans that mature, and so therefore, the debt service will be retiring at that point. And it, it's a total of about $135,000. So by the end of 2024 fiscal year, we'll, we'll have retired about $135,000 of, of debt service. So, so as we look forward to the budget, when there are other expenditures, whenever that debt service rolls off, then it makes it much easier to, you know, if there's some, if there's another expenditure we need to make, that debt service is, is rolled off, and we can add something back to it, and we certainly have the revenues to support that as well. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Where'd you come out on property taxes? You figure?
Great question. So I sent off the file to this guy right here, and yesterday, or earlier today, and so, really, the 2021, and that's what goes into delinquency, right? We, is the 2021, and I was actually really surprised, we were, we were just talking about this. Usually, we have about 6% to 8% uncollected by this point. We're right at about 4%. So we've, we've collected at this point in the game, of course, we have 10 years to collect the total amount before it falls away, which we virtually always do, and by, and so we're kind of ahead of the game on that as well, so it looked really good. As far as the property tax collections for 2022 that we just ended, we're pretty much in line with that, with the historical.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter.
Yes, sir.
For your floor. City Attorney, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we've just started looking at, is what Chris just mentioned, is the delinquent properties, and that's from 2021. They may be down, but it's 25 pages worth of delinquent properties as of 2021. So we've just started looking at that, and we'll be, we'll be working on that in the days to come. Few other things that we've done for the city over the past few weeks, some annexation plans, Plan of Services for a couple of annexations, the Edgerton Road annexations. We've reviewed some discovery filings, and the Hester litigation, which that's going to be coming about here pretty soon. We have council that's working on that, but we're monitoring that for the city as well. Zoning ordinances regarding a tent campground, we've, we've done some work on that, as well as reviewed the rent.fund services agreement. And there's been some other things as well, but those are the things that I can tell you come off the top of my, my mind. And we've got a box of documents here that Scott was able to retrieve from the former city attorney, who's now chancellor, so we'll take that back to the office and see what we have. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Kansas?
But from our perspective, it's been a good month.
Well, it wasn't until you said we had 25 pages of black text, isn't it?
Well, you know.
You're a poor guy.
That's the law you're talking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
City Major said he didn't have a report tonight. He will do his, no, I missed his.
He's ready to go.
With only 25 pages.
Just 26 this week, so it's 26 pages. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor of City Council. Want to start my report off again, just echoing, being able to meet with Justin and his team since he took over as interim president of the Alliance, probably in December, January. We've had several chances to meet with his team, tell them the wants and the needs from the city, from our businesses, and noticed big strides on Justin and his team part to try and make that much, much better working situation for our businesses here in Hareman, and tickled to death. I mean, he jumped at the opportunity to help us with our Rockin' on Rome, which, speaking with our downtown merchants, anytime we can have a band, or some event, that just helps them out more, because we're struggling with our budget, and this, that, and the other. So their, their financial help from part of the Rome Alliance will be huge. And also, I sent you all pictures earlier this week, too, and the Rome Alliance designated money to each of the cities for signs, and I know the mayor's been working, I think, seven years on trying to get the sign on the side of Christmas lumber, so I sent you that design. We had an individual from TCAT Monday to look at that, and so we're getting close to an end on that. And I think as you come down the hill into Hareman, it'll be really something to be proud of. So again, that's all part to help, I think, Rome Alliance. So thank you, Justin. Couple things I want to update you on, grants that we had, PN 127957. This is a grant that was started back in 2016 or 17, affects our streets. It's a C-MAC, Hareman signal timing and equipment signal upgrade. Those are the silver boxes that you see at our intersections. Most of ours are very old, and we've had to spend some money on some repair out around Webster Pike, Webster Road out there. We temporarily fixed it, working with Progressive Electric, but as Kida and I got to looking, and this is one of those grants that just sort of lay dormant for whatever reason, and Kida and I started uncovering and talking to T-DOT, we sort of resurrected that grant, and it is a fully 100% funded grant on behalf of T-DOT. Comes to a total of about $2.3 million, and they will come in and replace all those signal timing upgrades. Right now, since the grant's so old, NEPA documentation has changed, which means, and I'm sure this is very surprising, there's added, more added requirements to better get this grant to its completion. So now we're waiting on what's known as a QHP, which is a Qualified Hydrologic Professional Survey. Once they get that, they'll have to change the contract, and then I'll bring it to you all for, for the admitting purposes and approval, and we'll continue to move forward with that. Our other one is our sidewalk project that we've had to reject the bids and then rebid. I talked with Jeremy Langford, Wiser, and T-DOT this week. They are, we submitted all our documentations for the bids to be rejected. T-DOT's not accepted that, but we also turned in a request for the additional funding. I think Jeremy mentioned $13 million through T-DOT. So while we're waiting on them to reject the bids that you all approved about a month ago, we've already requested the additional financial assistance, and I think I emailed Candace and Frankie. They're working on the plans right now to include the conduit and the lighting that should have been put in there in the first place, and as soon as we get those from Wiser, I'll make sure each of y'all get those, as well as HUB to look over, and give you approval of that. Drax Crew has been, and I want to brag on them, they, we've had several trash calls, but as we got prepared for the storms that we expected to hit Friday, his crew, Drax really wasn't worried. I called, we all brought our chainsaws, had everybody on par, but Drax said, we've really been working to trim back trees on the streets, and he said, I think we should be in good shape. And after our winds passed, and Friday night, Saturday morning, Drax didn't have to come out, or any of his guys. It was, it's really good, good preparation on part of Drax's part, so kudos to Drax and his entire crew. Page three of 26 pages. And I'll move. The other we'll focus on is basketball. Basketball has ended, I think Charlie's here, yeah, basketball season ended. Baseball and softball practice started last week, and so you can get down there and see just about every single night. We'll have opening ceremonies for our baseball and softball, where we'll showcase our new speaker system, that didn't work last year, so we've got new speakers, and our new scoreboards, but also our updated fields. If you get down there, today, we received the loads of dirt, and they'll be tilled in to make our fields much better, much safer for our kids. They're going to do that tomorrow, and they start early in the morning, they will work all day long till it's completed. But that's a mixture that's got sand, it's, I mean, it is really nice. They use it on professional fields, so I think even a fan will be able to notice the difference, but certainly our kids that use our fields will be really good. So our golf course, David Santos finished spraying this afternoon, so everything is being prepped for our increased play at the golf course. They've done a lot of cleaning up up there, so Charlie was telling, they're expecting just good things to start heading that way with extended hours, especially with the time changing. Our materials for the deck will arrive next Tuesday. We're hoping to get that constructed in the next two weeks, and the golf cart shed that was damaged in our most recent storm prior to Friday night, we've got an approval from our insurance to go ahead and move with that, so Charlie's security contractor, and hopefully he'll start on that Monday and be finished by the end of the week. If you're down there looking at the dirt, looking at the fields, our covered batting cage is almost complete. We need to add some little surface on the bottom down there, hang the nets up, and then that'll be open for our youth league, high school, and middle school kids to use. So that would be great, especially when they have rainy days, be a covered shed. So I think that's going to be a big asset. If you don't have plans for Thursday night, they have the basketball awards tonight, and that's held at the Princess Theater. And Charlie, I remember you said a couple of our city councilmen went last year, but that's from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Princess, and that's a lot of fun. So if you have a chance to drop in and see, see us where we get to just really appreciate everything our coaches and our kids did for our Hareman Youth League, get by and see that. It's really going to be a good time. And on Saturday, June the 10th, the oldest golf course in the state of Tennessee will have their 100-year golf tournament. That'll be, of course, at our golf course. Be a golf, 100-year golf tournament celebration. We'll get you more information on that. It'll start at 8:00 in the morning, they've got bands later on in the afternoon, and food, so should be a good day of fun. And I think I've got everything covered, Charlie, unless you want to?
Thank you, Attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
What day is it on?
That is going to be Saturday, June 10th, and I'll make sure to send that out, a reminder to you. We've got Tammy here from the library, and I say this every time, but every time I read her report, I always learn something new about the library. They just completed spending their 2022-23 allotment from the state. All those funds were used to purchase fiction and nonfiction books for adults, young adults, and children's books. The thing that I didn't know, Tammy has a lease program for adult and young adult books, and what that is, anytime they have a book that is really popular, maybe it's been checked out, correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy, y'all can use this lease system with other libraries to?
No, this is okay for us to buy. Or not buy, they send them to us, and then we can send them back.
I should have asked before I gave the report, so that makes sense, yeah. So we're having stock, they've been checked out, so they can lease them, and then?
We do do interlibrary loans for that.
But that's nothing new.
No.
No, okay. But anyway, that's, again, people that use our library, what a great service. They came in looking for a book, and they have them, and then we can return those. So just a great job. And then the help they do with, with all of our citizens in tax season, and they stay really busy during this year, printing out forms and trying to give direction and provide people that can help them with their tax forms, and that's a really utilized service, and very, no pun intended, taxing on the copying machine that they have. So we talked about some ways we might better make that better. Tammy's part of the Rome County Library Board, and it meets four times a year. They're going to meet this month, be meeting this year, this month in Rockwood, and that's where they take care of all the county businesses that's related to within the county, but also the state. Tammy says the children's programs are going great, and then Connie sent her report, they had a great day, a great month of February, full of Valentine's Day parties, thanks to Sandra Ferris, McDonald's owner, who helped supply food for that, some of those children's events. They also had a Flat Stanley program, where, I mean, it reminded me of what the mayor's done in the past, but they had Flat Stanley, and I guess Stanley's a little flat character, but they hid him all over the city, and then the children had to come back and write stories and read a book about Flat Stanley. Another thing, too, they have ordered their solar eclipse sunglasses. Another thing, too, they have ordered their Solar Eclipse sunglasses. There's gonna be four worldwide in this coming year, and so they'll be prepared to really showcase that. Now I think that's, got that in, Tammy? Anything else you want to add?
I don't know.
Okay.
Sure.
Thursday morning, if y'all recall, we talked about this in the fall, Thursday morning, here in the council room at 9:30, we'll have our first administrative hearing, hearings and codes violation. That'll be with Glenn Cofer, that's open to the public. That's everybody that Jimmy has had to go above and beyond to get help from the county. So this is the very first one we've had, they've got a full slate. I know one person was already reported, they won't be able to be here, but they had to provide documentation of Jimmy and Glenn. But that'll be 9:30 here. And again, that's just a quicker route to get repeat violators, people we can't seem to get properties cleaned up, just a quicker track in a chance record, should we need to go that route. Finally, and I'll end my report here, I'll give you a quick doc update. I sent you that email. We've passed the certification process with TBA, it's sent on to the shippo and the tribal, so looking forward to hearing something back very soon with that. Next, this coming Monday, Tina Spears, who's been an employee of the city for over 23 years, mainly at the community center, we're gonna have retirement for her. That'll be from 11:00 to 1:00 at Gates Hall. We'll have a luncheon. Again, I'll send a reminder out, or Martha will, but certainly if you have time and your schedule permits swing by, and just wish her a very happy retirement. Ron Berry and I have worked, are in the process of working with our PEP renewal. That's where we look at everything we have in the city, make sure our deductions are set right, deductibles, and Ron is taking the burden of that. We hope to get that completed this week. The school board voted unanimously to approve the quitclaim deed of the Drax Track property. If you remember, I told you, TDEC, we were looking at applying for a grant with that when they noticed. That was still in the Harriman City Schools name and Rome County Schools. So with the help of John and Gavin and that, we got all that moved. Two weeks ago, the school board unanimously approved to pass that over. It now gets to pass to the Rome County Commission, and it's on their agenda for Monday night. I don't think there'll be any obstacles. Once that's approved by the county commission, we'll have John and Gavin complete that quitclaim deed, and then that property will truly be in the city's name. And our training rooms, if you've not had a chance, we've really worked, they had some plans, and we developed this council room, and it may be a place for an emergency operations center. I met with the mayor, but we've taken our training room, we've added some tables, some chairs, we've put TVs in there, so it's a true training room. But what we also done, we've got Tom Dillon, our IT guy, and we're gonna make that, it's very similar to what HUB has over at Candace. But in the event that we might have an emergency or something, we need to come together, that room will be fully functional with those TVs, they'll be interactive, we'll have interactive communications if we need to talk to Rome County EOC. So we're in the process of finishing it up. On the way out tonight or anytime, come in and take a look at it, because hopefully we don't have to utilize it in that format very much, but it'll be a truly proper training room for anybody that needs to use that. This week, I'm gonna be meeting locally with our T-Dot office, Todd Sexton, and I spoke with Senator Jaeger, gonna travel to Nashville and meet with the state T-Dot about our paving, especially along Highway 27, that's been put off for quite a while. Our local T-Dot agency can help with some milling. Drax does only can with patching, but cold patch does not last very long. And so the areas, especially in South Harriman, that are so bad, need to be milled out and properly patched until that's paved. T-Dot's been telling, I know the mayor and members of city council, this was gonna be done years and years and years ago. Harriman's been passed over numerous times. So hopefully in meeting locally with T-Dot and then going to Nashville, we can maybe speed that process up. Wanted truly end my report tonight, I want to brag on kudos on all our departments. Really worried about the weather on Friday and what was projected to come in. Between HUB, we talked to Candace and to Frankie, we offered their services, and they needed us, and likewise, they were ready. Our fire department had extra personnel on, Baron brought in the night shift two hours early, so we would have more than enough police officers in case it got really bad. Even Charlie volunteered parts and wreck, I mean, everybody was on standby if we needed to clear roads or whatever. Luckily, by the, of course, by the grace of God, we didn't get hit as bad as we thought, but really prepared. And I felt a whole lot better, and just really proud of the way our department heads and all our departments stepped up.
Well, kudos to you too, Scott, for you were coordinating all of that stuff. So I know I called and bothered you on that day, but...
It wasn't a bother, and it was easy, because they were all ready. I mean, it was ready, ready to be done. Just want to show you some pictures and try and utilize this a little more. What you see on the first two pictures on the left, that was the start of our batting cage about a month ago, and over this nice mound of dirt that was delivered today, that's what it looks like now, just have a few more steps to finish that off. Hopefully we'll have it done next week. Charlie and I met about that today. Over on the left, long time coming, we have our brand-new LED wireless scoreboards on our soccer fields. In the middle, we started cleanup of the Oasis Boat Ramp, and you know, there's several boats in there. So our fire department has coordinated, helped pulling some of that out. I think that one right there, they've already cut in half. And then also with Drax Crew and our fire department, been flushing drains out around the city. That's a picture on the right there. This is pictures from our children's program, from our library right here. And picture on the left right there is delivering that tandem load of dirt that'll go on our fields. And then our first golf tournament that we're gonna have this spring for this year will be Joe Eskridge's Golf Tournament, and that will be on March the 25th. So kudos to Bear. We have not used this system, and I know instead of us getting up here talking, so Bear and I, and Bear has worked endlessly, not only on that training room to get those TVs, but also to get this system here up and running. So we're gonna try and utilize this more in the future, and hopefully make things easier to understand. So bragging on everybody, cannot forget about Bear sitting back there in our room. He does a fantastic job for the city.
Thank you, Bear.
Yeah, he does.
Thank you, Bear.
Before you sit, will you explain what these pictures are?
Yes, we got these from Wade Presswell. If you've not had a chance, we've had them up here just for a couple of weeks, and not done a good job explaining it. But one thing we've tried to focus on is commercial properties that we have within our city limits. What do we have, what is available, what is already occupied, and where are they actually located? So if you get a chance, look at that, it'll make quick fix. If we talk to a developer who comes in and they give us a call, we can take a picture of this and send it to them, but we have it at our fingertips. And again, it's just trying to utilize our commercial properties, what we have available, where we need to develop, where we might have areas that need additional resources.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Oh, I meant to ask Charlie. I used to take ball things, you know, quite often up to a place called Mirable. Kids caught the shot, love to stick it to anybody every once in a while. And are we gonna be, are the sides, is that gonna be closed in? I mean, is it gonna be like mended in to where it's housed off from the weather, or is it all gonna be open, Charlie?
No, in that case...
Yeah, in that case.
We wanted some netting that goes around on both sides of the top, so it'll catch the ball and stuff.
Okay, so it's not gonna be, it will not be cased in metal, you know? So we're not gonna try and sideways, okay?
And there is power very, very close to that heating facility now. That might be in our future plans where we do enclose it, maybe put a heater in there. But our goal this year was to get this up by the time softball season started.
Tag us into a transformer and run some lead off of it, some USGs. Get it going. But yeah, I was just wondering about that, because it's, man, it's, that's a marvelous facility over there, and I'm tickled to death, you know? I mean, I hear rave reviews about it. You know, a lot of council kids are, yeah, tickled to death about it.
You may also anything, City Mayor?
I saw what I wanted to ask you about, that you did send something about it, I don't really know, it's been new to me, something I think we need to get on the agenda, and Mayor can help out on that, too, pretty soon. And involves doc, and plans, things that you, me, and Charlie both have worked on. And in my opinion, I think we need to go ahead and get that thing going, because it's gonna be profitable. And I don't want to say too much, because why you having to take me upstairs and turn me up to two tat? But I think if we're prepared to do that, I'd say everybody's gonna be on board with this right here. And then, and then there's a second step to it, you know, and that's getting, that's gonna get Kingston involved in. And we're the first, if I, am I saying too much?
No, we've got lots of plans, and we'll be bringing those...
We're the first state to have this. So, you know, I think, not ready, but we need to, we need to be off and hit the ground running. So I mean, that's my, in my opinion. I just wanted to mention that. And I know, I sort of thought you might bring it up tonight, but you had, I mean, you had a full, you had a full plan.
No, I sent part of that out, I see an email earlier in the week, and we talked about that in our next workshop.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Awesome, awesome. I'm just, I'm just saying it for the betterment of Harriman kids, ages, people of all ages, yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we're going to new business. First time discussing possibly approved ordinance 0323-01, ordinance creating the City of Harriman Safety Committee. Everyone should have this in their packet. Scott, before they vote, you want to kind of explain where this comes from?
Because I reported probably about a month ago, we had Public Energy Partners here, and they do a site visit. And we had John Johnson, who's our safety committee, he's paid for that, or he's our only safety person. So we got to talking with John and Public Energy, and we didn't, it was hard to get feedback from each of our departments, you know, to keep our thumb on the pulse. So safety is a big issue, and it's number one, and John, anytime he and I have talked about it. So we talked about starting this safety committee, no different than other committees we have that would meet on a monthly basis, include members of each department that can help us monitor, report, and make sure we just stay as safe as possible.
Motion's approved.
Motion.
motion by Councilman Harris, second.
Second.
Safety Councilman Frost, Councilman Harris.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Frost.
No, sir.
Floor's open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Brian Frost?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Mead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next time discussing possibly approved, John Brackett to serve on the safety committee. He will be the council representative.
Motion.
motion by Councilman Frost.
Second.
Safety Councilman Johnson, Councilman Frost.
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson, yes. Floor's open for discussion. Who has the role being as the council representative on this committee? Exactly. You want to tell it to...
Yeah, just similar to our other committees that have represented from the council on there.
Such as fire group, which is...
Yeah, yeah, just making sure we have council represented.
Okay. And just so we are, they can't vote to do anything without a point of the council. Everything still has to come through here. They will just meet and bring recommendations before council changes that they see need to happen and things like that. Small things, I know they can do, but most things will come still before this floor. Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Brian Frost?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Mead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next time discussing possibly approved, the detransfer of parcel Control Map 036G, Group B, parcel 003-00, from the City of Harriman to the Harriman Industrial Board.
Motion.
motion by Councilman Harris.
Second.
second by Councilman Brackett, Councilman Harris.
Set aside. Yes, sir.
Councilman Brackett.
Yes, sir.
Floor's open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Brian Frost?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?